We want to call the meeting to order, both with a prayer and a pledge. Heavenly Father, we just paused just to thank you for who you are. We thank you for this evening. We thankful for everybody around us table helped give us all wisdom to do what's right for our citizens. Special prayer for our chief, who had a medical procedure today, be with him. Pray for healing. In this I pray. Amen.
Amen.
(Inaudible) of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I wasn't done. (Laughter).
I don't know if I can repeat when you were starting.
Yeah. Oh, yeah, you can. Okay. Welcome, everybody. Call, please.
Marth.
Here.
Bassett.
Here.
Beverly.
Yes.
Clipper.
Here.
Martin.
Here.
Ridgeway.
Present.
Okay, you have before you the minutes, the last meeting. Any additions, corrections? Not entertain a motion. Accept it. Make motion to accept as written. Second.
My second.
Roll call.
Beverly.
Yes.
Martin.
Yes.
Bassett.
Yes.
Ridgeway.
Yes.
Marth.
Yes.
Clipper.
Yes.
Okay, before you the bills. Any questions?
No question, Mayor. Tower maintenance, 56250. Where do we have an antenna that we have, that we use?
We have two antennas on the mark. This is temporary fix. They're in today, they were still working on it when I came here. Do the firm now. One's for PD, one's for fire.
Okay.
Are that Porta Jones for the park?
Sorry?
Porta Jones, are those for the park? I'm assuming so. Yeah. I would say yes. That's all I got. Make motion, pay the bills.
He made a motion. Second.
I'll second that.
Okay. Roll call.
Marth.
I'm staying.
Clipper.
Yes.
Bassett.
Yes.
Ridgeway.
Yes.
Martin.
Yes.
Beverly.
Yes. Okay, next on the agenda, Erica Willeter from Lyons County CIC. She's got a few words of wisdom for us tonight.
I don't know about wisdom. I don't know how I got selected first. Well, thank you. First of all, I want to say it's been about six months on the job officially. It started in January after Jerry Hayes retired. It's been a joy to work with the mayor and his team so far. We've got a lot of different projects and things happening here, so I think Hicksville is doing wonderful things. And on top of that, been visiting all the businesses and it's really good to hear like there's a lot of momentum here. So I want to make that comment first. And then the reason I'm here tonight is for an approval for Blessed Capital LLC. I'm here on their behalf. What they are doing is requesting for a community redevelopment area agreement to be approved. They are doing $95,000 in remodeling to their location. That's at 103 South Main Street. I've already taken this before Hicksville, Exempt Village Schools, and also for County Career Center. And they have approved the abatement for seven years at 75 percent. So the last step is getting approval of the agreement of the council. I do have the agreement here and I would like that to be considered tonight for approval.
What was that address again?
So, oh wait, sorry. I gave you the wrong address.
It didn't sound right.
That's your address.
Yeah. (Laughter).
We're getting improvements. We're getting improvements.
I tried.
It's 160, sorry, it's 164 East High Street.
Okay, that's better.
Thank you.
Who's that?
The coroner. Gelford and...
Yes, for Kirk Collins.
Collins and Gelford, yeah. So any questions for...
You have any other questions?
I'll entertain a motion to accept this agreement then.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
I'll second it if Mike made it.
Okay. Any other questions? So I have a roll call.
Martin.
I'm staying.
Beverly. Bassett.
Yes.
Ridgeway.
Yes.
Marth.
Yes.
Clipper.
Yes.
Okay. Any other questions for Erica besides what she just reported? Been a lot of meetings with her and running both feet. Things are moving well.
Have a lot of fun. And on this, I'll just leave this with you. It will need Troy's signature and the mayor's.
Okay. I'll do that tonight.
Okay. Here you go. Thank you, guys.
That way you can take it with you tonight?
No, you can just email it to me in the morning.
Okay, boards and commissions. Board of zoning appeals met May 20th. Minutes are in the packet. Any questions on that one?
As the first application was discussed and they voted and approved that, but they don't have anywhere in their minutes about the second one for the school.
Flip the page.
Double check two, three times.
Mine was like that too, Eric.
Oh, yours was like that too? You got scanned?
My wife impressed both sides.
Oh. The scan doesn't have the second page in it. I'm assuming they voted yes.
Yeah.
I got the approval from Mike. I just don't see it anywhere in the minutes, so.
I'll get you a copy.
Second application submitted by the Hicksville School Board District was adding non-conforming signs with the existing sign located at the school. After long discussion, everybody approved it.
Okay, we don't have to act on that, do we, Troy? Since I passed it?
No.
Okay. Okay, and the park board met May 19th. Minutes are in the packet. Any questions?
Just curious, did you ever get a list from the HBA?
No. That's my next project.
Did they ever put up the handicap barriers for people not to pull it, you know? They have a handicap.
Getting a little contact. I don't know if Jeff still does that. What we really decided on.
You ever find out about the water pumps being turned back on yet?
I suppose we could.
See, all the other health mandates have all been lifted, so.
What about shutting that down? Did people still get their golf carts up there in the grass?
Yeah. They go around. But they don't want them parked up in the handicap. There we go.
Is that going to create any fire code issues?
It's supposed to be a collapse.
That was my question. Is it going to be removable? Because there's a structure up there, but.
Right. I just know my mom quit going if she had to walk that distance. If we can, they can pull her up there, that'd be fine.
Okay. Any other questions on that meeting? Okay, council committee reports, water and sewer committee met May 24th. Mike, you have anything?
Well, like you said in the minutes here, Mick Pocaski came, county is looking at pretty explanatory, looking at what they need to do with the Gordon Creek substation out there for the sanitary. Needs updated, upgraded, rebuilt. Over the years that I sat on council, I know many of you said your lawyers, they have talked about at one point in time maybe bringing Gordon Creek into the city. They were looking heavily at that, how that's going to be done and engineered at this time. They're getting some ideas. Pogomire, I believe, is working on their end of it. We've already kind of built design plan for industrial drive that can maybe connect to the land that would run down the US, I would say about 20 or 49. Not 24. Way too far.
Ways.
So we're kind of still in preliminary talks and looking at different options and if they're still going to do that kind of thing. So that's definitely on the burner there. We had met again, talked about the Havert Drive swell on the backside there. I know Cory's had some couple companies talk about it. I got with Troy. We have an easement situation going on, easement encroachment. We had talked about widening the easement to bring in additional swell on the backside of Row 3. Me and Ron were kind of in favor of that at the time. In doing so, I talked to Troy about it. We've talked to Ken and Cory about it. They again had somebody come out, give an estimate of rerunning that swell out there. When I was down at Cory and Troy and Ken's office, they had talked about a developer, when we sell that property and whoever buys it, they could possibly push that onto them because through our ordinances, and I was putting all this on the table. They have to...
Correct the wording. Push that. The responsibility, not the water.
Responsibility, yes. Correct me if I'm wrong.
Don't get down after he does not have to do it.
He does not.
No.
He doesn't have to do it the way you want it done.
That's right.
He's got to meet the terms of our other ordinance about dealing with his water and everything like that, so. And that's what I said to Mike was, if you're the developer, and you know this, and Taylor certainly would, there may be multiple ways to deal with it. I presume most of those people have somebody, whether it's an engineer or whoever, that advises them on those. You'd rather do it the way your guy tells you to do it, rather than coming in and having us, I've already done something. I mean, I would think that would be more appealable. I mean, Taylor could, you know, something that would be more interesting for you if you knew you had to deal with it, but as long as you followed our ordinances, you could deal with it the way your people tell you to deal with it, with approval from the village. Then take it over a swell that's half in there, half out, or whatever.
First, we talked, we had a committee meeting, we talked about it. We kind of voted in putting in a swell in two to one on our end. Looking at the first estimate, it was kind of salty, I thought. I don't know what it costs to put these kind of things in. At first, I thought it was going to be kind of an easy fix and again, I didn't have any idea of cost and everything. We've had three people look at, I believe, one estimate at this point in time. There is some woods that we have to deal with that maybe have not been looked at thoroughly on one of the parts of the subdivision and everything, so. They had given me the ordinance here and I'd made copies if anybody wants to read it. We're kind of, I mean, I don't want to spend any money, but I, we had made promises to settle the residents out there that when we have the bad, bad rains, the water flows through there. We designed the storm drainage on Havert Drive to address that storm water when it rushed through all that property out there. It's a change of plans now with the subdivision. You know, it was engineered, built that way on Havert Drive, but with hopefully somebody buying it, putting up homes, putting up lots, doing the drainage properly and, you know, I can have a change of heart a little bit if we can have a developer address the drainage issue between the homes and the roads and everything, so it doesn't affect third row or any of the homes out there. The neighbors side by side, all that needs addressed, not just them. And we have those situations around town over the years when we've had the heavy rains because of different way of the land and how people have built their homes and, you know, things change over time. You know, it's an issue. I think we should have a good ordinance in place that if any of this happens, that it is addressed and looked at and upheld through, you know, our zoning and board of, you know, and our boards. I don't know if anybody else has any comments?
Here's a funny thing. Why have we talked about this for three, four, five years? Almost any meeting we have, we talk about this. We had Havers in here, we tried to buy ground from them. We tried to get them to donate ground from us. We've done everything to get possession so that we could put a swell in there. Now that we have the means and it belongs to this village, now everybody's going, hell, well, let somebody else do it. Somebody might not do it. It's not up to a contractor to come in there, develop that subdivision and make the water go into a trench that won't go through those people's yards because that ditch was designed to handle water on Havert Drive, but it wasn't designed, it still runs between everybody's houses to get there. We have an opportunity to do something. I've spent a lot of time out there. I've talked to a lot of neighbors. I'm going to feel like a real jerk when the rest of you people say, hell, we're not doing it, because all we have done is talk about it and talk about how necessary it was to do. We've got to get Havers in here and talk to them. We've got to do this, we've got to do that. Now that we can do it, done.
It's not done. I mean, we're...
The heck it's not.
We're talking about, Ron.
Watch.
We have to bring it to council.
Just watch.
I'm still, I'm still okay with running a swell through there.
And here's the clarification I'll make. The developer could be required to deal with the extra water and directing this stuff from his development. If there's a current problem that needs to be addressed that's already there without any development, that's not his responsibility.
Exactly.
Obviously. To clarify, so that's why I say is if there's multiple ways that he could comply with our statute that could get approved by our planning commission with he or she with dealing with the water, they could choose whatever route their people or they think is appropriate and that as long as it doesn't increase the water flow onto those people on Havert Drive and it's dealt with properly, if there's already an existing problem there, a developer would not be obligated to address the existing problem. I guess to make sure that's clear.
So what do you think you'll get the other estimates in?
I've received one today, so we're still, still one estimate out. Probably another week. I think John said it'd probably be two, it'd be two or three weeks out. He looked at it.
Does the first one come in a lot higher? I know you said it seemed salty, but I don't know exactly if you had a budgetary number in mind. And where are the money? I know, is there any money, is there any money set aside for something like that? I know we talked about it. Like Beverly said, you know, we talked about when, when we had Havers in here too.
You want to spend the money?
I guess.
I have no clue what the first one coming in and I know they don't announce that either, but I know.
Are the first two comparable? You could say that. I mean, they're...
Okay. If anybody has any question, we've dealt with this a long time. I dealt with this long before we dealt with it here this past year, now that we own the property. You know, we did try to obtain property. We tried to get it donated, we tried to buy it, we tried to do anything. There is a, there was a swell there at one time for a reason. Water was running from the back to the fronts. And, you know, when people have that happen, and it's happened other places in town, when somebody has built or changed anything or added a driveway, water started running different directions and people would call us, say, why did you let them do that now that you're pushing water on us? Well, they're like, well, it's a private property matter. You know, it was kind of out of our hands when, in a way...
Well, that's the, we did our ordinance.
Right.
That addresses those things, the planning.
The first shovel of dirt that gets turned out there, if somebody buys it and starts to develop it, the first shovel of dirt that gets turned out there, one of the four or five people that has water running between and through their houses on those hard reins is going to say that he's the problem and he's not going to put up with it and he will just quit.
On this issue, was it just the committee made a recommendation that the council actually vote on it?
No.
So...
We wanted to get numbers and facts and come back to council, but I'm getting emails from people that are saying, yeah, but we're done. No, we didn't. Nobody said that. Got them on my phone. Don't tell me I'm lying.
No, I didn't say that, but, okay, what's councils?
I see you come with all the quotes.
Waiting for the quotes for...
And you think you'll have them...
By next council meeting?
Should, yeah. I can, I can put a phone call out to him and all of them are coming in.
Then you're getting two separate quotes from just behind the houses and then all to the...
Under the woods, yeah.
Yeah, like I was talking, okay. So I guess what's another two weeks? Then let the whole council...
Well, that or if you're just waiting on one person, you can tell them, hey, well, it's not going to take that long. If you've got to have two weeks, we're just going to go on.
So is that okay, Ron? Two weeks and think about, discuss it? We get the bids in, then we'll decide, yea or nay? Is that not a good plan?
That's what I, that's what I thought we were doing before I started getting emails.
I know that, but I had talked to Troy, because remember after our meeting, I said I got to talk to Troy about the easement issue. And then we started talking when I went down to these guys. They brought this to my attention. I said, well, it's something we need to look at since it's a development kind of thing. And if it was something that they would have to address within that development, that was...
You're also assuming that whoever buys it is buying it for purposes of development.
Exactly.
True. I mean, probably true, but you never know.
Right.
Might build one big house right there in the middle or something.
But in the meantime, you know, this came up and I wanted to address it with everybody. It's only fair to put it on the table. We're still talking and looking at things, so I thought that was only fair.
Hey, Mike, I got one. The cost of Gordon Creek, who that cost be incurred to or who would be paying for it?
Of the engineering of it?
Yes, and if it's...
That would all be, well, if they're going to pull it, that would all be on the county. Now, once it's put in, then the fees and everything would go back on the residents of Gordon Creek if they do a standalone system. Now, if they tie into the city, then we would have to charge them a certain amount for services and then...
Your favorite part of painting?
Yeah.
Double, double rates and...
Ken, Cory, getting back to the swell. Has a surveyor contacted you at all or is he waiting on any information to proceed?
No, so they're...
Because I'd like to keep this thing, get this thing on the market. I guess that's, and I talked to Troy and he gave me...
You just have to stay after him based on having dealt with him before. He's busy, very busy. Squeaky wheel gets the grease sometimes.
Okay. That's what we'll do then. Next meeting, we'll decide, which is in two weeks. Any other things, Mike?
Questions?
Any questions for Mike? You had a report, Charlie?
Yeah, we, we spoke at the ordinance meeting, sort of, and then through email, and we've decided to increase the rates from $75 for the first hour and $50 for each additional hour to change that to $100 per hour for the first and each additional hour.
And this is for what?
The fees charged for nuisance lawns.
Okay.
Because it sounds like there's people just taking advantage of it.
It's basically $100 hours an hour regardless.
Right.
That's why I know what to tell Mike.
Yep. I'll bring the ordinance back the next time.
Okay. Any questions?
Do we still do, take bids from people like building them to mow yards and at homes and stuff?
Yeah, we just been doing it ourselves.
Okay, thanks for that report. Everybody okay with changing that wording on mowing? $100 per hour. If it's an hour, 20 minutes, it's for two.
Still cheap.
How many, are we doing quite a few still or just...
Sounds like there's a couple.
Couple, it sounded like.
Yeah, there's at least one, they're using this for lawn service basically.
Well, no, I mean, I'm not...
No, you're right.
I'm just saying. It's cheaper for us to mow than what they can hire it done.
How is that, how are they being held responsible for the fees? Is that assessed to taxes or how?
Taxes.
Well, if they don't build, they're...
And if they don't pay, then it would be assessed to the taxes.
They pay within a week.
So...
What are the average size of these yards?
That I don't know.
Does it usually take an hour?
They get a 70...
The ones usually be an hour and a half.
They get a notice, they have 72 hours to comply. And if they don't comply, then we start. And they also actually, I think the way it's written, they get a minor misdemeanor for every day.
They don't have to.
They could.
Never happened.
So, okay, do you want that raised, what they come up, recommendation? What's your thoughts?
That's what I told them. I'm on the committee with them. I did not make the meeting, but we talked through emails and I said $100 is too cheap.
Okay, what's other thoughts?
I'm not the one doing it, so I don't know what that...
I don't know how much time it takes, like for the worst one that, you know, you guys are kind of come up as well. How much time are they spending on that?
They normally go $125.
So it's taking them two hours? Or 75 and 50, so it's, it's taking them two hours to do it?
There's also, you've got, you know, somebody has to go around and write the nuisance letter and then somebody has to charge them, the equipment, the personnel time.
So mowing mow gear and take more time?
Push mowing. Take a couple bills.
So...
I was going to say, can you...
We're not charging enough.
So not breaking it up into hour? So it's, I mean, you're not breaking it up into 15 minute increments where it's $100 for it goes an hour and one minute, it's $200?
I think that's what they're saying.
Is that how, is that how?
Yeah, that's what the weight...
Change?
Yeah.
Okay.
So the mower gets to 50 minutes? He's, oh, better slow. Five minutes to do the last strip.
I mean, the council can change that number.
When you're doing, when you're, when you're out using our manpower and our mowers and stuff and everybody knows and you see it coming through on the billings, how much those mowers cost and how much it takes to repair them. When you're doing something where the people go, hey, that's a deal. You're too cheap.
Well, in the way it's currently written, it's the minimum fee to be charged, so, you know, you get to, you know, if we get along, it's...
But you can't just go, well, the minimum, but we're going to charge you 500. Can't do that.
If we don't have a maximum, then...
Exactly, exactly. So the way it's written, means nothing.
Right.
Correct?
So I guess the committee recommended one price, so council can make a motion to make it more. I'll entertain that.
Isolation clause in it? If it's multiple times repeated, then it steps up by a certain percentage.
Put something in there like that?
Now you got to do bookwork.
Yeah. Keep track of it. How often does it start all over?
Let's just take it up to $200 an hour.
What would a contractor charge to do that specific lot? Any idea?
I have to go one time.
You take a big mulcher and go in on one property that I know of and do a decent job. Sometimes we don't do a decent job out there, but you go in there and do a decent job and you're going to have a piece of equipment that's going to be 250, 275 an hour.
The ones that are taken care of, I mean, that's one that has all the limbs laying The ones that are taken care of, I mean, that's one that has all the limbs laying all over the place, and junk stuff to mow, junk to mow, lower around or over.
Yep.
Okay, what's the wishes of the council?
We're at a hundred. You want it for now, just go, we'll go halfway up, we'll go a hundred and a half, and if everybody still thinks that, you know, they start calling you up, wanting to have you drop down, give them an estimate, but we'll jack it again.
Okay, I'll enter. Any other discussion on that?
I like your idea, and I second that for a hundred and fifty, an hour.
Straight per hour?
Per hour?
Yeah. I think if we've got properties that are being consistent offenders, I think we need to investigate the misdemeanors and- Yep.
Okay, got a motion?
I agree with that.
Raise it to a hundred and fifty, do I? Any other discussion?
Well, I'm gonna bring back, I'm gonna bring back legislation.
Okay.
If you guys just say that's what you want, I'll just-
So we don't do a roll call yet?
Before you, before you go, do we want to do something like Taylor was saying, like, if, if, if this is the fifth or sixth time that you've got a letter, and we know-
In the same calendar year or something?
Yeah, and we know that we're gonna be mowing you till clear through October, that we could jack it? Go to two hundred? I mean, there's one-
There's a lot more, that's just a lot more paper trail, somebody tracking how many times you mowed it.
At this point, there's only the one that I know of that's regular brown, if you want to call it that.
I think, let's see, I would say, I'm not on the ordinance committee, but I would make their, I would say, let's just go with the one fifty, see how that goes, talk with, getting the ordinance put in place, and, or, I mean-
Can we make that as an emergency?
Eric said, yeah, we make an emergency.
Because, you know, mowing will be over if we have to re-read it, so, okay. Okay, you got everything you need?
Mm-hmm.
Thanks, Charlie, for your committee looking into it, and at least brought to our attention, needs to be raised, so, okay.
No, we don't really-
We gotta bring back- Okay, any other committee reports?
Personnel committee is going to meet on June fourteenth at four thirty, and I haven't looked at the calendar out there yet, but we plan on being in here unless this Saturday, but-
I think it's all right. Okay.
We didn't have a mayor/mayor, but I just wondered how the mark radios work since they put the-
I haven't heard, Doc, about the radios, mark radios.
For the, with the new tower and all that stuff?
Yeah.
A little better. We had Bender come in and reprogrammed some stuff, and we've been kind of playing with it a little bit, and retesting everything, and, um, making some difference. I can't really speak, you know, it's not perfect or anything yet, but-
The tower's down, right?
Yeah.
It's gone, okay. Okay.
Did you notice a big difference when the tower was up and running?
Well, the tower wasn't this best, so we can use it in here, but yes, there was, there was quite a bit of difference, but it did help us, and it helped Bender quite a bit, to figure out, you know, what exactly was going on, so. It served its purpose, I should say.
And they have their problems down on the other end, too.
Appreciate the nine-one-one committee coming in and doing that.
Are we gonna have another meeting, though, with them, and find out what the diagnostics tests were? I think we should. I mean, we had the first meeting to get it up. We need to have a second and find out what their thoughts were, and-
We better give them a little time to-
Day or two.
To go over the facts, and see what they can come up with.
I think when it's all said and done, they're gonna have to tower up.
Sounds like that was one thing that Mick also mentioned, didn't he, that the commissioners were working on?
Yes.
They want to make sure before they spend that money, from the top, it was gonna be-
Yeah, that was gonna solve the problem.
Okay. Any other committee reports? Administrators report, Cory, Ken?
I got one thing when he's done.
Uh, Hoennbrink is gonna start next Monday on the water line job up there on High Street. As you see there, they don't know how they're gonna handle traffic yet, so hopefully it's not a disaster like, like it was last time. Uh, what else we got here? We met with Proudfoot Engineering to finalize a, a denim revision on some paperwork, to redo stuff for Shaw Terrace, to pick up Shaw Terrace and Archer Street, to help with the, the overflow from the sanitary system there on Shaw Terrace. Um, and then we started handing out the ordinance for the grease and oil disposal into our sewer systems. Just about all the businesses here in town, churches, hospital have received these, so, still waiting on quite a few of them to come back.
That's the one that requires the, like, the annual, or the, basically the manufacturer's recommendations to make it on the sewer, on the grease, sewer traps and stuff. Are we having more issues? Is that why we're going back and handing them out now, or?
Well, yeah, I mean, I seen it myself my first week.
Last week, well, plus the past week, yes.
Like, three days on, those guys are out there on, High Street out there, in front of Magpies out there, and had a lot of grease out there. Not really sure where it's coming from, but they probably spent five hours, sat back in that, sucking grease and stuff out, and then up there by Collins Guilford there on the corner, there's a possible repeat offender, and we followed that lateral to see where it was coming from, and we found the problem of that, too.
They dumped a bunch of, they find a bunch of turkeys or something in the back at the wealth management office?
Yeah, across the street, yeah. It's just they, they spent a lot of time. I personally didn't realize how much time the street department and the sewer department guys are out there, just sucking grease out.
How often do they have to do that?
Um, I'm told up there at, at Maple Street and High Street, that they're up there about every forty, forty-five days, for precautionary purposes.
That's an issue, okay.
And they have a grease trap. They have a grease trap.
Now, you were down a block, too. The boys have been working down there, right from there.
Yeah, like, roots.
That's where the problem down there?
Cutting roots.
Oh, yeah, that's where it's-
And are they using the new, our new, did they cut them, our new truck and all of it?
All of it, really. It's definitely been getting to work out, that's for sure.
Lot of fire, and stuff got out of there.
Oh, I'll tell you, I haven't seen you guys, but Kent, remember how my neighbor used to water the basement all the time, and checked every line there ever wanted to check, and, and, uh, he spent, I asked him the other day, and he told me he spent seventeen thousand, five hundred dollars, would ever dry, to dry his basement up. It still floods, and after we found that manhole buried inside of my yard, and they run a jet through there, his basement's never had watered in it since. It's kind of amazing, since we don't even know where the pipe came from.
Is there anything you guys can do about the swell there at forty-nine and Spencerville Street, and High Street, the intersection, Catholic Church?
The bump from two years ago?
Yeah, that thing's getting bad.
Well, more Brian Street. I'm waiting to get a quote from Nick, but the issue he said with that was going to be, and remind me to come back to paving in general, that was gonna result in another road closure on Spencerville, forty-nine and High Street for, like, three, four days.
That long?
Yeah.
Just to, just to grind out a little asphalt in that trench?
Yeah, because it's gotta be pretty steep. I'm still waiting to get a price from him, so we'll see if they can do it when they're doing the water line.
Nick must be looking at something that me and you are.
No.
It's happened several times before, hasn't it?
I showed his foreman, and they, they know what they're looking at, so it might get done, if not, might just have to put up with it till ODOT comes in. I mean, look at the grip she got with the road closure we had before. They'd have to shut that intersection down even for two days. How are people gonna go nuts? But anyway, I'll remind him to keep on getting me an estimate to see-
Yeah, because it's getting bad, I mean-
Yeah, I mean, speed bump. You don't really need the whole intersection. I mean, there's some spots-
Right.
But that trench, I mean, my gosh, if you put a grinder on the, on a skid loader and went in and milled two or three inches out of there, and-
I'm just reporting what they reported back to me. I showed them the spot, so we will see. Getting back to paving, on the sewer end of it, we came in about seventy thousand over, would get estimated, so.
On paving?
Yeah, due to all the trench collapses and things like that. So I've gotten some calls from people on, why didn't we get this new racetrack on Chicago Avenue, and sort of, whatever. We tried to do the worst spots, the rest of the village can go in in a year or so and take care of it. If we, if we would've got every single crack, and you name it, you would've been over a lot more than seventy thousand. So that one, because some people are gonna blame the mayor, some are gonna blame council, and I said, no, they had nothing to do with this one. We went out and walked, or I went out and walked it with Hoennbrink a couple times, and we tried to get the worst spots beyond what their trenches caused. Yeah, there's still some spider cracks and whatever, but we got the worst of it. I just didn't want to go over the whole lot, ever paying cash for this, anyway.
Is that a really bad spot on the outside edge? Was that fixed?
Outside edge is where?
Of Chicago.
What's paved is what got fixed, because I don't know what bad spot you might be talking about.
Okay.
In regards to the ODOT paving and their schedule, eighteen going out of town, that was supposed to get paved last year, is that right?
No, it was supposed to be in twenty fifteen.
Twenty good news.
Well, no, I don't- At this point, their plan is by next May, so take that with grain of salt, if they bid it this fall, they thought by May, the companies would be ready to come in, whoever gets the bid, and they're gonna do all the state routes. Originally, they were just gonna do, yeah, hopefully they might do, there is gonna do some spots, but they've decided to do every-
So, by next May, is what they're shooting for?
Yes. I haven't heard anything lately.
I'd be happy with that.
I was gonna say, how realistic do we think that is? I mean, that sounds, that sounds like a great option, I was just curious, because they're, you know, if we're six to seven years out from any other paving, I think we, as a village, probably ought to take a look at what's gonna be the cost, because, I mean-
They've stuck to this twenty-twenty-two for the past three years I've been back. That doesn't mean next week, they won't send an email, and I'll do whatever is getting pushed back, but the last correspondence was it should go to bid. The contract will go out November, by May, they should be in town, so we'll find out. If I hear different, I can let you know, but-
Yeah, that'd be great.
Point, that's-
Okay, any other questions for, for administrators?
Do you know where they're, plan on fixing that, where those condos went in, on North Brian Street by Shell Station?
That's private property, they've been contacted, they gotta get back over there and get some stone in there.
Yeah.
I mean, they posted a street bond.
Yeah.
So I know people are grossing about that, but that is not the building.
Do we have a timeline on what that, for, so for private connections like that, do we have a timeline for how long they're able to have the street open?
I thought we put one in there. Route cut, I don't believe we got a, they originally wanted to put cement in, and I said, no, I'd rather not have the cement patch on an asphalt road.
Right.
That might be something worth investigating. Obviously, it's just one scenario at this point, but at, making sure we put a timeline on limiting the street cut, the, the time allowed to keep a street open like that.
What do they get charged for deposit on that? Five hundred?
Fifteen hundred.
Eight hundred. Hey, we need to, we need to find out if there's a time limit on it, and if-
I don't think there is.
If it's not stated in there, uh, that, that concrete has to be, cannot be used, and only by two minutes asphalt can be used, then that needs road in there, because we can't tell somebody, you can't do concrete when we've got concrete fix, fixes all around this town.
Good idea.
Okay, good idea.
Is that ordinance, or is that street?
Ordinance. Check and see what the ordinance currently states.
I will do that.
But let's see, since you got sworn in.
Good job, Doc.
Okay.
That'd be the only two, though, excuse me.
Oh, go ahead.
That'd be the only two, is, is, time, the timeframe that the contractor has to restore the street. Street and curb cut are wrote in together, so, so the street and curb cut, what, how long concrete, how long contractor has to repair-
And the material type?
The material types.
I will definitely look into that, okay?
Any other questions for administration?
How's the training going?
Good.
You learning something?
Okay, moving on, solicitors report, Troy.
First thing I have is Resolution two thousand twenty-one dash zero seven, a third reading by caption only, a resolution of the Village of Hicksville, Ohio, authorizing the sale of unneeded, obsolete, or unfit village personal property, including by internet auction, for the calendar year twenty twenty-one.
Entertaining a motion that-
Make a motion to?
I'll second that.
Roll call.
Martha?
Yes.
Massett?
Yes.
Beverly?
Yes.
Klepper?
Yep.
Ridgeway?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Next would be Resolution two thousand twenty-one dash zero eight, a first reading by caption only, a resolution authorizing the mayor to enter into a grant application project writing agreement on behalf of the Village Fire Department with Ohio First Responder Grants LLC, and declaring an emergency.
I made your motion to suspend?
The emergency being they need to get the grant submitted.
Second, I'll second. Roll call.
You're suspending the rules, Larry?
Yes.
Beverly?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Massett?
Yes.
Ridgeway?
Yes.
Klepper?
Yes.
Martha?
Yes.
Second, third readings, a resolution two thousand twenty-one dash zero eight by caption only, a resolution authorizing the mayor to enter into a grant application project writing agreement on behalf of the Village Fire Department with Ohio First Responder Grants LLC, and declaring an emergency.
It's a move.
Second.
Roll call.
Martha?
Yes.
Klepper?
Yes.
Massett?
Yes.
Ridgeway?
Yep.
Martin?
Yep.
Beverly?
Yes.
Any questions for Troy? He's got a, he's got a lead, right?
Yeah.
Anybody got any questions as he's going out the door?
See you, Trey.
Thanks, Trey.
Okay.
One thing I do forget, what are we doing, the safe routes to school?
That, the school's in agreement to do it.
Can I get an update on that? What, what specifically are we talking about?
Sidewalks on the north side of eighteen, headed to the school.
Basically, from the Gordon Creek to the school, and then we're putting a crossing in?
Well, I don't think, I don't think we've decided what we're going to do yet, but are we going to apply? Do you want me to sign the contract with GGL to get things rolling?
I would say yes.
Do they want-
The school is okay for it?
School has to do majority of the-
Yeah, the school's gonna get hit with the-
But we do have their support, the schools.
He was gonna talk with Mr. Spenceman?
Yeah, he's, he's for it. I got an email back, supporting it, so.
And this is to add sidewalks on the other side of Hyde, all the way to-
We have a delight.
Will they put a crosswalk in?
Yeah, flash-in light crosswalk or something.
I'm gonna do one or two. One or the other.
I mean, you can't-
I think it all depends on the traffic when they do their study, if we move forward, on how much foot traffic and everything else there is, and maybe go to the school, tell us back than last time.
Committee gets the forum to discuss and all that, so.
I would say, yeah, I would vote yes to move forward with that.
Uh, Mr. Countryman's email response back to the group directed at the mayor was, yes, we are definitely interested in, and we'll get back with you, and nobody's heard anything.
Well, they just had graduation, so I think they got a little more-
He's gonna use that for an excuse.
Sure. It works every time, but, yeah, but therefore, it isn't like, oh, I don't know, it was a lot of work.
Yes, yes.
Superintendent Miller put a lot of time in it, so Keith knows what he's getting into.
That way through sale, I mean, seven grand up front, so.
Eric told me what we were gonna get into before we even started, you know, but, um, I didn't wanna, I'm on the committee, but I didn't want to say anything until-
Like Kent said, we'll probably have to pay the engineering upfront fee.
I think we agreed to that initially.
Last year, or the last time the school paid it.
Mm-hmm.
So, it's a good way to get some more sidewalks in town. I think the last time we spent forty thousand, is that right, Kent, for all those sidewalks on High Street?
We were like three queues at one, so. We had around forty or fifty out of pocket for all the-
Okay, so, everybody's-
Because there's no sidewalks.
Down construction part of-
Fisher. So, move on, I guess.
And you will contact Keith?
I can, yeah.
I think that's what, how his, his email implied, he's kind of waiting on you.
Yeah, I got the blessing from the council, right?
Yes.
Okay, I'll work on that tomorrow.
Good thing you don't have a job.
Yeah. Um, department heads, police chief, you got anything, Doc?
Uh, the only thing I have is that I have no news, but in May, we had four hundred calls per service, and two hundred and five of those ended up turning into cases, so, that's it.
Okay, nice job. Doc did the, Memorial Day, did a nice job. Any questions for Doc? Okay, fire and EMS, Scott.
Thank you for approving the contract with OFRG. Like I said before, the grant's gonna be proposed in appliances, nozzles and such. The momma came up with almost seventy-five thousand dollars of stuff for replacement, so, well, I pay approximately low over ten percent of that. We did get the, just today, he submitted the bills for the air compressor grant, for the doping. We're gonna pay twenty-five hundred, twenty dollars out of pocket on a fifty thousand, nine hundred ninety-five bill, so. I think that's all I have.
Any questions for the chief? Good job.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks, Ken. Park, Val, Gary, yeah, Val.
Well, we opened the pool on Friday, and this weekend it was packed, but every day. Cory got a sunburn down there, taking their sunscreen, and everything's going good. And I also got a call from Dan Bender. He has some men, eight foot by six foot, or something like that.
Six inches?
Six inches, yeah, not six, six inch. And we thought we could, he would donate, and we could put his stones down around the parking lot, so they don't drive in the grass, and try and keep them.
Okay. Will he place them?
He'll bring them down, he'll deliver them, but he, we gotta have the fork, the village fork, to get them all.
How many?
About two hundred.
Wow, two hundred, that's a lot.
He uses them for hauls, or something, as well.
Okay, tell him, thanks. Any questions for Val in the park?
Great job, though. Thank you.
Doesn't appear to be any leaks in the pool?
No.
Well, yeah.
Our number's up?
Yeah, they really went, I mean, it was-
They had 108 yesterday.
Well, that's good.
Okay, thanks. Cheryl, you're up.
We have all of the May reports, the fund status and fund summary reports, income tax, utility collections, the revolving loan report, the May mayor's court, have the six months, I think it's six months of the SMTA franchise fees, a liquor control notice for Casa Grande just telling you what our part is, which is 35%, and a letter from MediaCom, they're dropping another channel.
Okay, any questions, comments on that list?
Not in regards to that, but with this new, I don't even know what it's called, Biden's plan, are we expecting more, more money for this?
For infrastructure. Doc, Kent.
For what?
More money, private government.
Biden's.
Patriot Act.
Yeah, whatever it is.
We're supposed to get something, but I don't know.
Last I read, it was 670 some thousand.
That's a lot.
That's, but that's nothing official, just, that was six months ago.
Why just the, neither commissioners, obviously they, they've got money that they're looking to spend, so I don't know, we as a village, we're expecting some as well, and basically how it's going to get allocated.
We're not 100% right now.
Was using?
Yes. I think the commissioner's got 3.2 million extra money. Defiance got over a million dollars to the city.
Can't keep the street.
So once we get that, then I suppose the finance committee could look into it.
No, I've got dibs on it, so.
You? But anyway.
You guys better have dibs on water sewer projects, I'll put it that way.
Well, yeah.
That'll pay a good share of the next three huge projects we've got coming up, so.
Some big ones. Most of it's infrastructure, water sewer, so.
Yes, exactly.
And that would serve everybody, keep the utility rates down.
Speaking of water, have we found anybody to turn dirt out there on the new well field?
They're doing it as of speak.
Well, they were mowing.
Yes, knocking it down. He's got the chisel plow there, ready to go.
Okay, well, since you, since you brought it up.
Just get your blood.
The odor, I have no idea. Get our blood boiling, is that what you said?
A little pressure.
By the time we're said and done with this whole archaeological nonsense, we're going to have about seven grand wrapped up in it, so you better hope they don't find anything. But it's part of the process, I mean, that's what. Well, I know, but that's a lot of money to spend compared to trying to put wells in to serve 3,600 people, because I didn't have seven grand in the budget necessarily to spend on playing in the dirt, and I'm sorry.
I talked to Malmy Valley and tried to get out of.
Yeah, they said we got to do it, that gang close.
You got the grant, so you got to follow the rules.
Got to do it.
Okay.
So anyway, when those bills come in, don't be screaming nobody knew anything about it. But we need new wells, I mean.
Oh, yeah, so. Yep, I tried. Any other questions for Cheryl? Okay, mayor's report, you got the email from Chief Denny, I'm not going to go in detail, but you guys know, because of HIPAA, got to be careful, but I do know he had the seizure today, but I haven't heard anything, so. Concert series at the Huber starting June 24th. Water to Wine is going to perform. McKenna, Weatherhead, and Jason Van de Mark are the, on tap, that's what, two weeks from this Thursday. I don't think we had it, what, for two years, concert at.
Just one year.
So I'm trying to get some sponsors to help pay the people a little bit, I'm working on that, if anybody wants to donate, just pay them a little bit, so.
Do you know how far, how many acts they got booked? Or how far the series is going to go into the fall?
August, I think the week after fair is the last one, five or six, six being the most. So, yeah. So get, use Facebook for this, this is something positive, so use it, you know, but it's seven to nine at the Huber. And want to thank the Juan family for the garage sales, I guess the town was hopping this weekend, so I'll thank them. And the Memorial Day Parade was back this year, so I thanked the Legion, and Doc was the main speaker. Good turnout, a lot of people at the cemetery, good turnout, so that's all I have. Anything else needs to be brought before this council?
Just make a, make a mention of the farmer's market, it starts on Saturday mornings.
This, every Saturday?
Last Saturday, yeah.
And it's down by the old school?
I mean, for the.
Okay. Your wife's still ahead of that, so thanks to her. Anything else?
Day in the park, June 26th.
June 26th, day in the park. Make a motion to adjourn the meeting?
Second.
I'll second that.
You're getting broke into Philly's place.
Marth?
Sure.
Massett?
Yes.
Beverly?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Pepper?
Yes.
Ridgeway?
Yes.
Meeting adjourned.